Thank you very much for coming out tonight to our March third Town Council meeting. We'll start off with the, uh, roll call. Jim, back there in the back, there is. Wendy's here, Vicki's here. Our new county manager is here. Curtis Franklin here. I'm here, Sherri's here, Mr. Junior's here, and Mr. Warren is here. All right. Do we have a chance to look at the agenda?
Make a motion and give through the agenda first, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Then a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, same, motion carries. Next up is the approval of the minutes for the February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five Town Council meeting.
Make a motion to approve those minutes from February eighteenth, two thousand five.
That's it.
Again, we have a motion and a second to approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, same, motion carries. Public participation. We ask that you complete the speaker request form and submit it to the deputy clerk. He's going to be over here in the corner. Approach the podium, speak clearly, state your full name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. Do we have any, what do we have, anybody?
I haven't received one. I didn't get one from him. Did you go over there?
We have requests from virtual weeks, found the server live, five minutes, found the server live. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Can we wait until we talk about the gem, or is it, is it not on the?
Yes, you can wait until we talk about it. Yes, okay. Uh, information lines. The, uh, first of all, do we have anybody else? Okay. Uh, first of all, information line, Levy County Board of County Commissioners meeting is tomorrow, March fourth, at nine a.m. at the, uh, Government Building. Uh, this is an announcement that's just going out. The Levy County Birthday Celebration is Monday, March the tenth, at five p.m. That is also on School Street. We will be blocking off the street, as requested, going into night also. Uh, I think it's going to cover the whole street, but I understand. Cemetery Committee meeting is Wednesday, March the twelfth, at three p.m. Uh, the Levy County Affordable Housing Advisory Committee meeting is Wednesday, March the twelfth, at ten a.m. That is also on School Street. We will be blocking off the street, as requested, going into night also. Uh, I think it's going to cover the whole street, but I understand. Cemetery Committee meeting is Wednesday, March the twelfth, at three p.m. Curtis, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Uh, the Levy County Affordable Housing Advisory Committee meeting is Wednesday, March the twelfth, at ten a.m. We're here also. Um, okay. The Town of Bronson Public hearing for adoption of comprehensive revision of land development code is March the seventeenth, at five thirty here. The next Town Council meeting will be March the seventeenth, at six p.m. here also. Uh, Town of Bronson Scholarship applications due Friday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, the Sherri, they already got on that, already out.
Yes, sir.
And the Town of Bronson election is Tuesday, April the first, seven a.m. to seven p.m. Election will take place here in the building here. And then the student of the month representation will be the seventeenth also. Also, the Waukesha Water, Waukesha Water, uh, meeting will be at one p.m. on the nineteenth. That will be in Cedar Key. That is a advertised meeting, so anybody can come. And at this time, we've had some awards to give out, so. In recognition of, uh, years in service, Russell Mitchell, fourteen years. Curtis Stacy, twelve years. Curtis? We can't, we can't, Russell, come out to public meetings.
He said he was coming.
We've got a little momentum here for this too. We've got our servants.
He said he was coming.
And we'll get that to him also, this.
He's part of the unit.
And we'll get that to him also, this.
He's part of the unit. He's going to give his picture to him.
And we'll get this to him later on. Okay. Leroy, come to the podium, we talked to us, buddy. For all those, this is Mr. Leroy Marshall. He is with the Water Works.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Leroy Marshall. I am the Director of the Resource Management and Projects Division at the Swan River Water Management District. I'm here today to talk about a flood study that we have in Waukesha. Did you guys get a copy of the presentation, um, that we put together for you? Should be a PowerPoint. And what I can do is I will go through this before you take it. And then I will make sure it's sent to you. And, uh, if you want to come back, I'll come back. We have plenty of time between now and the meeting. So, the Waukesha Water Shed, as you guys know, the Town of Bronson is within the Waukesha Water Shed. The water shed actually goes from the coast, um, all the way up into, uh, White Spring, High Springs. Goes all the way up to High Springs. It includes, uh, High Springs, Newbury, City of Elatual, City of Archer, Town of Bronson, Town of Otter Creek, and then portions of Levy County, Gilchrist County, Elatual County. So, all of that area is in the Waukesha River basin. Um, we started discovery on doing the study in July of two thousand twenty-one. Um, we finished that discovery in November of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, then in December of two thousand twenty-three, we had a kickoff meeting. It was up in, um, it was up in Newbury. And I believe your, um, city, your past city, Nissou, came to that meeting. Uh, since then, we've been doing the, the modeling, um, and that wrapped up in November of two thousand twenty-four. And so, the next step in the process is what's called flood risk review, which we're going to have in April of this year. Uh, so, the flood risk review is, is a very important meeting for your citizens to attend because it is the only point in this process where a citizen can tell us that we made a mistake or that something is not right. And we can take that statement and go try to fix it. This is the only time that that can happen. So, um, for example, if we, uh, if someone is looking at the maps and they go, hey, it's, it's never flooded like this here. I've been, I've been here for fifty years and it's never flooded like that. Um, what we would have them do is, is circle that area on the map and tell us, you know, what they think it should look like or that it never flooded or whatever. And then we can take all those comments and actually go back and we go through every one of the comments that we get. And we make sure that, um, you know, we try to address each one of those comments as best we can. Uh, and then we come back for our, what's called preliminary maps. Um, if a landowner waits until the maps go preliminary, we can't make any changes based off those comments. So, the maps go preliminary, the landowner comes back and says the exact same thing. My response is, I'm sorry, if you don't have an engineered, um, model to tell us that our model is wrong, there's nothing I can do for you. So, that happens at preliminary. So, it's very important that your citizens come to the flood risk review meeting so that if there are any changes that need to be made or they see something that they feel is not correct, they can let us know. So, the study results that we are, are looking, um, for this, for this watershed, we're doing the entire watershed. We're doing what's called a two D model. And then we are updating all of the Zone A and the shaded Zone Xs. Their Zone As are, are going to, I mean, if you have flood insurance or you have any flood or anything that's an A, um, is, uh, the, the thing about an A is that they don't have a base flood elevation. So, we're going to be doing all the Zone As and all the X shaded, X shaded are basically your five hundred year, uh, events. Uh, this effort will not supersede any detailed studies that's already out there. There's a detailed study for the Town of Bronson, uh, for a lot of the Town of Bronson. So, this study will not supersede that study because the detailed study is a level higher than this study. Uh, and, uh, and also, the mapping will not, this effort is not in any area that's considered urbanized or developed, uh, like a city. Uh, so, if you are, uh, in an area that has city stormwater and stuff like that, this doesn't, um, is not in those areas. So, I wish I could show you some of the results of the, of the changes in maps. Again, I guess I could pass this around so you guys can see. And I will make sure you guys have. I'm sorry. You can just pass that over.
I'm sure.
Um, I will show you, I will get to those, uh, that presentation so that you can see better some of the changes. But what you will see in the results are, um, in the older maps, when you look at the flood zones, the, the, the edges of the flood zone were kind of, kind of smooth and, um, looked like kind of blocks. Now, what you'll see is very, uh, the edges are, are very detailed because they're, um, they're based off LiDAR, current LiDAR that's going on right now. So, you, you don't have the smooth edges, you got very jagged edges because they're actually following elevation. So, that's how you can tell that there's been differences, uh, in those maps. So, uh, the next slide on there talked about some of the changes and how many, um, how many, uh, structures were included or, or taken out of the flood zone. Um, going off my memory, I think for the entire study, there may, may have been fifty or so structures that were added. Um, but I'd, I'd have to get the, the presentation to go through all the details. But I can tell you this, in the Town of Bronson, there were no structures added, uh, to the flood zone. So, if you are in a flood zone, you pretty much remain in a flood zone. If you were not in a flood zone, you're pretty much, um, are still not in a flood zone because we didn't add, um, any structures in the Town of Bronson. Uh, so, uh, I think the next slide on there was to talk about the virtual tour. Um, we have a virtual room that anyone, uh, can go to. And in that virtual room, we have a bunch of information about the Waukesha Water Shed, information such as the number of federal declarate, uh, federal emergency declarations, uh, how many flood insurance policies there are in the basin, uh, how much money has been spent on, on, um, emergency response. All of that kind of stuff is in there, as well as the maps. So, anybody can go into the maps, pull up their, their address, put in their address in the maps, zoom down to their specific property and look at the flood zones, uh, or lack of flood zones on their property. Uh, you can also look at the existing, what's being proposed. And then we also have a map that shows the changes. So, um, if you're looking at that map and you're looking at a property and it's red, that means the flood zone was increased. If you're looking at that map and it was green, then that means the flood zones were decreased. So, we have, all of that is in that virtual room. You can go in that virtual room, uh, SRWD Virtual Tour. Um, just search for it on Google or whatever. You'll be able to, um, get into that room. And then, um, you can see all of that information we have. We'll also have all the presentations that will be given, all the slides that will be, that we will have. Everything that actually happened in person will be on that virtual tour as well. So, um, if you aren't able to come to the, to the meeting, um, you can come to, you can go to the virtual tour and get everything. It's April fifteenth, and it's here.
What time?
Starts at six.
And here, you say you're right?
Yes.
And what is the name of the virtual tour?
SRWD Virtual Tour.
SRWD?
SRWMD, Virtual Tour.
Thank you.
So, um, yeah, I'm looking at the, the results here. And so, changes in the county, there were twelve structures that went, that went, that were added to the flood zone. Um, there were seven that was taken out. There were, uh, five that went from no, uh, the X, the X zone to X shaded, which is basically shut down, and then a five hundred year event, you'll have some puddle in your water. Uh, I mean, puddle of water in your home. And then, um, there were ten that also went from, um, X shaded to X, that basically came out. So, twelve went in, but it looks like twenty-two had changes that had no effect on them, on their flood insurance or anything like that. For Levy County, not for the Town of Bronson again, there was nothing in the Town of Bronson, no changes. So, that's, uh, that's really all the presentation. I, I apologize that you guys didn't get the, uh, the PowerPoint, but I'll make sure you get them.
All right, so if anybody wants to challenge or bring evidence that they, that their property does not flood, or, 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 or flood, what would that evidence have to be?
They don't need any evidence.
Just come and say it.
All they got to do is tell us.
Um.
Give us what is it?
Yeah, at, at this point, all, all they got to do is just come to the meeting. Or, um, we'll have the, the, the map that we have on the virtual tour. You'll be able to actually go in there and circle an area virtually and put your comments in that this area doesn't flood or whatever the case may be. So, we don't, we don't need any evidence at this point. Just need you to say, yes, it floods and no, it doesn't. And we'll look at it.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
All right.
Anything else to say?
Have a good trip, hon.
Thank you.
Curtis?
I'll let you take it. All right, the next thing on the, the, um, this that I have is the water and sewer rate increase goes into effect, it's going to enter effect March first. Water and sewer are going to go up three point three percent. So, everyone probably, on the next billing cycle, you'll see a reflection on the bills of a three point three percent increase.
Was that on the, right now, do you know, we're not already?
All right, resolution, twenty-five to two was passed in the last meeting. I think, I think we still have to sign it. I have to sign it. All right, Carol Street Student of the Month will be next council meeting. That will be March seventeenth. They have a response letter. There's a response letter for the audit finding sent to British White CPA firm to answer findings. Uh, there's a copy of that letter in the packet. I'll read it briefly. The letter is addressed to the mayor. It's saying, you are, you are receiving this letter as the mayor of Town of Bronson based on the most current public records available to our office. If we no longer hold this position, please forward this letter to the current mayor. Section two, one eight dash point three nine. Your statute requires the auditor general to notify the joint legislative auditing committee when the municipality has failed to correct an audit finding that has been reported in three successive audit reports. The committee may then require the municipality to provide a written explanation of the status of the corrective action that has been taken. If the explanation is either not provided or determined to be not sufficient, the committee may require the chair of the governing body of the municipality to appear before the committee. On February third, two thousand twenty-five, the committee adopted a motion to direct the Town of Bronson to provide a written explanation of the status of corrective action that has been taken to the response to the committee for the audit finding. That year was reported fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Audit report and also the two preceding audit reports, the response should either explain why full corrective action has not been taken or if the governing body intends to take full corrective action, describe the corrective action to be taken and when it will occur. Please see the enclosure for the audit finding that we brought to the response. You may access the audit report from the auditor's general website. A certain other audit findings have been reported to the committee that relates to an area that we never fully resolved due to the limited staff and resources of the small agency. Higher the committee approved to waive a written response for search findings that was also included in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. The audit report recalls the municipality previously provided detailed response relating to the finding. The following guidance provided to assist you in your response. If the audit finding has been corrected and was not included in the audit year, audit report this year, same, I mentioned, two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, please indicate such in prior response. If the audit finding has not been corrected, please explain the corrective action being taken to resolve the audit finding. While we understand the audit report referenced in this letter contained a written response to the finding included in the audit report, we are requesting a response to the updated status of the corrective action being taken. Please do not provide just a copy of written response from your fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three audit report. Please provide, provide the written response by April fourth, two thousand twenty-five. You may address it to the Honorable Jay Collins, Chair of Joint Legislative Auditing Committee, and send it to the committee office using one of the following methods. They have a couple of email addresses. I think they did find in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, the findings close report that the commissioner found an audit field work, a preliminary working trial ballot did not reflect all required closing entries. As a result, several material audit adjustments were required after the audit process began. The lack of effective financial close and reporting process increases the risk that material misstatements will not be detected in a timely manner and also results in delays in performing and completing the audit. The auditors recommend that the town evaluate its monthly annual fiscal financial close and reporting practices and make necessary changes to reduce the risk of inaccurate financial information during the year and at the fiscal year end. I think I talked to William about it, um, the Riddish and White. This information was sent to them and they should be, should be responding to the committee. I think what they were talking about also is that because the staff is small, uh, same person, the primary check, doing the bank facilitation and all of this.
Curtis, am I mishearing this? Aren't they asking for a response from the municipality rather than the auditors?
No, they get the response, this is a repeat finding that's been, we started the auditors, or the CPA.
Do the auditors respond to this? All right. Because from the language I heard, it sounded like. Well, I tell you what, let's do a check on that and make sure that we, you know, we do that. Just, just to cover our bases for that.
Because they need to say, uh, even back two more years, it had been, I'm just reading as it say, so that'd be the third year that we have, actually, the respondent it said.
I think whether the auditors will respond, say what they did. We'll, we'll definitely. All right?
Because it does say the Town of Bronson, they want the Town of Bronson to re, to respond and not to.
The auditors normally respond, say, put it in letter format. We get it, we review it, and then we send it.
Okay. For sure, we'll take care of it. All right? Let's get here.
The response letter from the Levy County Board of County Commissioners to the letter of inquiry. I'm going to read the letter that I sent and I'm going to read their response for the record. They received the letter from, from the Town of Bronson. Greetings to the Levy County Board of Commissioners. I'm Curtis Stacy and I'm currently serving as the interim town manager for the Town of Bronson. The Bronson Town Council on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five voted to send a letter of inquiry to the county in reference to the potential accusation by Bronson of the H A White Gymnasium located at three nineteen Mondo Street. Please that this letter serve to reflect such interest in potentially acquiring the H A White Gymnasium and any parcels connected and to inquire as to your terms. Your prompt response will be greatly appreciated. We received a letter of response. Dear Mr. Stacy, this letter is in response to your February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five letter inquiry regarding the H A White Gymnasium from the Town of Bronson, which served to reflect such interest in acquiring the H A White Gymnasium and any parcels connected to the inquiry. As to your terms, I have shared your letter with the commissioners. As you are aware, the board of county commissioners voted unanimously on February fourth, two thousand twenty-five to demolish the gym. The BLCC has directed that I move forward with the demolition, demolition of the gym, and I am actively working with staff to accomplish this task. Should the Town of Bronson choose to submit a proposal to purchase the gym, I would suggest that they, that a good starting price placed would offer would be equal to or higher than fair market value for whatever land and building the town proposes buying. Additionally, should any offer be made, I would recommend to the BLCC that they require immediate and complete payment at closing and not to enter into any delayed payment or financing options.
Okay.
And the price of the, of doing that?
They didn't give a price.
They didn't give a price.
It was very vague and it was kind of.
And you just got this today though, right? This letter?
And how long have you had this?
It's been a few days. I actually requested a copy of it, it was denied, which is a record. It's part of the record. But I got a copy from the county. Um, okay, so if you look at the map, what they are showing as the property is one point three three acres and it has the gym and the multipurpose building on it. The property without buildings is valued at thirty-six thousand dollars. The property with the buildings is, uh, valued at three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars and that's where that number comes in. We are not asking for the multipurpose building. They're actually using that as the permanence department. Um, the county has found no value in the gym. They want to tear it down, right? It's junk to them. So, I propose, from the Levy County Preservation Corporation, we offered to purchase, uh, to hire a surveyor, to split a property into two pieces, to pay for the property underneath the gym with the surrounding parking area and the gymnasium itself for thirty-eight thousand dollars. This would be two thousand dollars more than the, um, land is valued at without the buildings. I've not heard a word back from them yet. Um, but I just kind of want to know where you guys are. I got another bogus, um, estimate from Hydro Drive from the county. And I'm going to explain to you how this is bogus. We have, um, in a storage unit, in a storage room inside the gymnasium, it is charging thirteen thousand dollars for carpet, for carpet alone. Baseboards are four thousand two hundred sixty-seven dollars and change. This is not accurate information. So, what they've done is they've added this up to one point two million dollars to renovate. to renovate the gymnasium. Um, and it's just more bogus numbers and that's only in one room. And another room and another what is listed is, um, I believe number room number three, the carpet was another eleven thousand seven hundred dollars.
Where is this carpet?
Exactly. Where's the carpet? So I emailed them and asked them exactly where this carpet is because I don't remember ever seeing carpet in the gymnasium. But it's listed in here as storage rooms. So I don't know if there are maybe through the bathrooms in the front.
There is no carpet back there.
There's no carpet back there.
There's no carpet. There's carpet listed here in baseboards and just ridiculous numbers.
And I don't remember them being any carpet back there in the back locker rooms either.
I didn't either.
And I cleaned, uh, I volunteered, um, with, uh, Mr. Chris Tucker when they took it over and cleaned that those back rooms out.
Okay.
For their church.
Inside the gymnasium, not the other buildings, correct?
Well, technically it's one of the buildings.
See, the building on the side, the the little room, the one that basically they say where all the mold is. There used to be carpet back there, but I want to say when, um, Weston Paul was using it as a workout area, that he took the carpet out. Because see how there was no carpet in there? He had all those, um, workout machines and all that stuff down, so that wasn't there. So, and then on the, uh, when you go through the bathrooms and those rooms in the back, those locker rooms, not storage rooms, there's never been any carpet back there.
No, never been.
It's concrete.
Right.
So, and then in the room in the front, when you first walk in, there's a storage room to the side right there. Unless they put it there, there's no carpet there because we used to keep concession stuff in there. So you wouldn't put carpet.
The only piece of carpet is in front of the door.
It's a locker.
That's it.
Yeah. Um, so that that's a public instance. Um, and then there are other, uh, ridiculous numbers. In one area, it says that a new roof would cost three hundred sixty thousand dollars. And then on the back page, it says that it would be two hundred ninety nine thousand dollars, same roof. So the numbers aren't even matching up in the same in the same documents from Hydro Drive. Um, and Hydro Drive is actually, they're not a general contractor. They are contracted for mold remediation. And so why are we getting numbers for baseboards and new windows and a new roof from Hydro Drive? Makes no sense. I will tell you that the only way to stop the demolition at this point is legal and that was started today from the nonprofit. We went legal today and that will be coming out shortly. Unless you all are able to stop them with an offer or or the nonprofit is able to stop them with an offer. Here's the thing is that this building is the very first gymnasium ever built in Lady County. It's right near Bronson. It is a historical building. And as a collection with the school building and the, um, the courthouse and this building, any of the municipal buildings, it could be considered a collection. And it opens Bronson up as a whole for grant money for all of these buildings. It's important that we want our heritage and not forget where we came from. So I'm begging you all tonight to fight for this and try to stop them. I know that the, um, Hydro Drive is supposed to start work on Wednesday of this week, but people in town have seen them around already. So we have to act with haste to save this building and to think about the children and think about all the uses. The churches want to use it still. Um, I heard from church members today and I've heard from them multiple times. Um, and I've heard from lots and lots of town members that want to continue to use this building. So we need your help.
Um, I just want to say that in my searching for, um, other situations like this that are close to us, um, I know that we have a lot of day seniors that are really upset with us for speaking out, um, to try to save the gym and to keep the gym. But when you look right there at Archer, their community center is a gym that was built in nineteen thirty six or thirty seven. It's so old that they can't tell you the actual year that it was built. It was a gymnasium. It was their only gym in that time. And they raised over nine hundred thousand dollars to restore the gym into a community center. That's what they use right now as their community center is their gym. So we are not the first people to fight for what is important to us. Don't feel bad because you're fighting. Don't feel bad because you're going against whoever is saying whatever. You are entitled to your feelings and we are entitled to ours. But there are places around us that has fought just as hard as we have, as we are. And we have, and and they they succeeded. So don't think that we can't succeed.
First of all, I want to say thank you for all of the work that you put into this. My, I guess concern or worry would be that I feel like this is. First of all, this is something that we should have had because we sent this on the nineteenth and we just got the response. Second, I think that they purposely don't put a number on it because whatever you say is not going to be enough or it's not going to be right. And it's going to be like, oh, well, you gave your offer. We don't accept it. It's going to be what it is. I don't think that they're going to accept. If if we came out and we said we got one point two million dollars out of budget today to do it, I think they're going to say no.
So Sherry, I and I hear you and I I agree. A lot of people have that same worry. I have that same worry, but I feel like we have to exhaust every every step that we possibly can to try. And the letter was actually received last week. I asked several times for it and was told that it was confiscated by the mayor and I was never given the letter. So you guys have had it at least since, I believe, Thursday. Um, I actually had to ask for a copy of it from the county and I received that Friday or yes, Friday. So you guys had it.
Rachel, can I, who did you speak to? Because I legitimately, the office received that letter the day around three o'clock. You don't know, because had I, regardless of.
And I was there Thursday.
Yeah.
Now I know the truth.
Okay, well, I will say this. Normally I do public records requests. Had I had the letter and you gave it to me, I would have given you that letter. The office itself, town hall did not receive that letter until today. Parker brought that letter to me today and he will verify that between two thirty and three thirty. So I just want to make sure you know that.
That it wasn't you know, I was sure that he had it last week.
I was going to say, because we didn't.
But I do appreciate that when he, um, lied to know that you had nothing to do with that in one town and he did confiscate the letter.
I don't, it was never delivered to us. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't somebody in the office that told you that I.
It was important to keep it from me and from the public, but I got it wrong.
He has been trying to keep it from me and all honestly, I have been there last week. Um, Ms. Schuler stepped in last week. Um, he could have been keeping it from me because unfortunately, when we're all there at the same time, we do kind of like have to talk around people. Um, and it's usually them talking around us is it's something that we don't need to know and not at that moment. So just saying this.
They can play it simple. I can tell you just exactly why I had it, my purpose and my possession.
Okay.
And that was for the legal to check it. Play it simple.
It's a public, it's public record.
They, they checked it and then we decided to check it again.
Okay, well, I had a copy before you gave it to your.
You got it. You got it from them. So do you.
Okay, but this council.
I would hide it from you.
The county, the council deserved to see it before I did even.
When we got the spots, we were to read it here in a public meeting. I've had several people ask me, Miss Libby sitting right there, I told her the same thing. I said that I would read it at the meeting or we would read it. It's addressed, it's it's addressed to Curtis.
But you understand that's illegal when people have to, yes, for public records. When the public asks for a record.
Just from the county.
To the town, to the town. And if town people ask for a copy of it, then you should have submitted that. Now, again, I got it from the county on Friday, so it's fine, but that is illegal to do. Moving forward. Um, if any of you have any more questions about the gymnasium or anything having to do with the property, I have all of the information here. I've done all of the research, um, all of the values that have maps that have everything that you need. If you have any more questions, I'm just pleading with you to please try, please try again.
More, you had a question, I think.
I was trying to figure out what number she was talking about, but I figured it out. She was talking, I thought that somebody was saying that they had installed all this stuff already, like carpet and whatever. But these were estimates of what they were going to install.
Right, 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 right.
For like a renovation.
Right.
That was my only question.
Most of the time when you get a, um, company like that to do something, they remediate mold and then you hire a different contractor to come in and do the the other work, so.
Right.
I'm sorry, I didn't have one more member to share with you. Um, the mold and the mold remediation, the cost of the mold remediation happening this week before they tear down the building, the cost of the asbestos removal is less than eight thousand dollars.
What?
I have the receipt. Yes. Yes. Right here in the binder.
Ms. Biddy?
Do I need to come up?
No, you're fine.
Okay. No, I just wanted to say, um, I really would appreciate if you all would try to get the gym. And when you write that letter, you know, you tell it's zero value to them. So I'm going to put them the price that, you know, Rachel offered them thirty eight or forty thousand, you know, and then you can work on it a little at a time. But the main point I wanted to say is, uh, as a council, one of your council members who did twenty years on the council, Aaron Emerson, we was talking and he said, you know, that gym means a lot to me. I was the first black in nineteen sixty five to play in that gym. And it means a lot, not only to him, but you know, but that was something that mattered to him. I played in that gym in nineteen sixty five and he was a council member here for twenty years. So think about all that when y'all make up mind of the decision of the gym.
Right. I? Parker, you got to be nice to her.
Yeah, I played in there in sixty six. Uh, but it it means a lot to me too. It 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 really means, not only did I play in there, but my chairman played there. Jerry played in there. Mary played in there. Trey played in there. Jordan played in there. I mean, it 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 means a lot. I mean, I can't put it in words how much it really means. To have it torn down like it's nothing, ain't good.
Elijah, I think you were next.
Yeah, I was wondering why, um, next, uh, week, I believe. Uh, they didn't announce on what we can contribute or what. She did not give an answer. We didn't say, what do you mean, we're going to give them two dollars or whatever?
We're discussing it now. This is the discussion.
Yeah, but she asked the question, what can we do?
And we're trying to, we're trying to complete the discussions.
Oh, we want to discuss it all.
How long can take?
Yep.
We got all night. Ain't got any work to seven thirty in the morning.
Two things, I guess. It it was lost to to the letter that was received, uh, just in fairness, uh, things like that should go to the the town manager, head of town manager so they can be dispersed properly to the rest of the council. Or they, nobody, no council member should be sitting up there tonight saying, we didn't see this. I mean, that's that's number one. And number two, um, I say, I'm I'm neither here nor there. I mean, I I I had history in that gym, too. I've rolled state records in that gym, just in ways. But if if you make them an offer and they refuse to offer, you made an effort.
Exactly.
Okay, so so it's not, it's not. You can't make them say, I accepted, like I said. But if you don't make a step tonight to say at least, make a motion to say, we're going to try and do this or that. We know what's in the budget and I understand when it's tight. But if you don't make an effort, then you'll never get told no. Okay, so you know, that is a lot easier to accept. Being told no if you at least made a try. I mean, in respect, respect of his week, she she put a lot of work into this and way more than we're spending. But I can promise you, she put a lot of work into this. And, uh, so, I mean, I just think that you can talk around it all you want to, but it would be very, very simple to just decide as a council, we're going to take a step forward. And then if you get told no, you move on. I mean, that's all there is to it.
Yes, sir, um, I just want to ask, uh, this question. What is your reason for you being against it? Like, what what is keeping you not to want to keep it? Because because it's so valuable to the town. You know, as you see, you hear everybody input that it's so valuable. And as you as a mayor, you should want to do this, everything that people want to have. So why are you so against it?
And I'm going to speak more personal here now, not to the council. Uh, he spoke about ago about here in nineteen sixty five. The manager of the basketball and football team that year was me. Hmm, okay. And so I was I was right there with you. John Rutledge was the coach. I spent a million hours in the gym. Yes, I have a lot of fond memories of it, just like everybody else, you know. Okay, and, uh, I'm not against the gym, except it has been. But what I am against is, I'm against it, is how much, how much money to accomplish what we're trying to do. I don't have, I don't, the town of Bronson does not have thirty eight thousand dollars right now in our budget.
We can raise it over.
Now, you can raise it and 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 open arms if you go right ahead. If you want to come up with some kind of system to do it. Yes, if if you want to, uh, my hat's off to you. I I I, you know, we'll be glad. Then, but don't stop at that. Then you got to be able to have funding to operate it from now on. And you got to do it in a legal manner. And the legal matter is what we have to coincide. And then the next question is, who is going to take ownership of it?
The town.
The town.
The town boss of us and we have to go by our regulations of insurance and everything else. Because of everything that we have to do, then God must be in it.
And that's why.
Those stipulations are different. Those stipulations are different than a private entity or whatever. I understand. That's what I'm looking for. Okay, play it simple. It's it's all about numbers with me. I I don't want to go out here and just tell, call up there and tell them, hey, we're interested in the gym. We would like to make an offer. That's fine. How are you going to do that? That's the question. How are you going to follow up with that after you do it? If they did say, hey, y'all could just have, here it is, buy it off, you could have. Then how are we going to maintain it? First of all, it's got to be, they're not going to do any remodeling or anything to it. And that's got to be done. Whether the the numbers are bogus or whatever, that doesn't make any difference. It it does need to be remodeled. It needs to be something.
I think I think the story decided.
And then that's very possible.
To do that bit, Rob.
That's very possible. Then then how do you?
A little bit too far.
Well, I'm just, I'm just looking at.
You going too far though.
I'm I'm making a difference. I'm looking at it. We cannot snap, we cannot snap our fingers and move it happen over now. I agree. Bruce has made a very valid point. Let's try. I I'm good for that. I'm I I have no problem with that whatsoever.
Okay, well, I make a motion to send them the offer of thirty eight thousand. And if y'all see me on the corner, then next week, y'all better donate something to my place.
And that's it for your motion.
Thank you. Hey, this would be a great way to to add to in honor of the one hundred and eightieth year of Levy County. That they would just donate us the building and we would have it. You know, that's the same address that they're looking to get, uh, locked on.
I have one more thing, if I can ask everybody in the room. The county has a meeting tomorrow morning at nine. And I really, we need everybody there. We need everybody to fight for the gym tomorrow morning, please.
Do you know what the timetable is on this? Are they planning on, have they like given a date, foreseeable date when they were planning on taking it down? Or are they just planning on, you know, we're going to go to bed one night and wake up next morning, but it's going to be.
Pretty much. They're they're starting the debate process on Wednesday and then they just continue to keep, their 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 plan is to just continue, just continue taking apart and and knocking down.
Your payment was done today.
It was done early then. So then it was done early. So we have to act quickly. Um, so I need everybody at the meeting. Now, it's not only agenda tomorrow, but but they open it up for, um, for the people to have three minutes. So, um, even if you walked up to the podium and said, please save our gym and then you sat down, just let your voice be heard, please.
We got a motion in a second. Yeah, we got a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
I got one thing, I'd like that.
Yes.
Mr. Barton, you said that nineteen sixty-five, you were coaching at the gym?
I didn't say I was coaching.
It's, it's, it's run that water boy.
Manager for football and basketball.
Cause I was like, you're only twelve at that. We're going to school in Dallas.
No, I was going to school here.
Really?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm really going to go with this, to get this to them.
Where, is, is, is a motion? We got a motion.
Okay.
And, and we got a second.
So, direction in giving this information to, that we making a proposal of thirty-eight thousand dollars, correct?
Yeah, cause they need to have it tomorrow.
That's what I'm saying, I'm asking. That's what I'm asking.
Yep.
Don't they have, like, see the man, be a.
Right.
Yeah, the program.
What about the handle, the for letter? That's right.
That's what I'm saying, just for the record, assuming the motion is approved.
Huh? Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Huh?
Not that I'm not for this, but do we have to check the budget first to see if we have that kind of money? Because it says in here that if they approve it, they're gonna want their money like tomorrow, or they're gonna go ahead and tear it down. So if we make the proposal and let's just say, if they say, okay, all right, bring us our check for thirty-eight thousand dollars.
I thought you had a little bit more.
It would be our closing share. It has to go ahead and close it, cause they ain't gonna be too long.
At least thirty.
I got somebody a little bit more.
I just would like to say that that is the opinion of the county manager, that was not from the board of county commissioners. She is the one who said she would advise them. So that's just an advice to them. They would have to vote on that and do that. So I don't think that is a problem. I really don't think it has to be addressed right now. We're not addressing in there that this would be a cash purchase, you know, we just said that that's an offer. And so there would be time, and, and I think in that previous letter or her previous conversation with our town manager, you know, where she threw out that figure, that really wasn't her job to do that, you know? She is the county manager, but it's the board of county commissioners that, that, you know, I appreciate Curtis conveying that to us. But I did say, you know, she can convey that, but she did say in that letter to Curtis, am I correct, Curtis, that she would advise it?
Yes, that's what I said.
Okay.
All right. You have a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify the saying up.
Yeah.
Motion, here it is. You prepare a letter, deny it, I'm assuming, up with just a here for an offer for the thirty-eight thousand dollars? And. And for this.
Did him not have told us, like, he said that?
I didn't propose, that's fine.
Uh-oh.
That's fine. It all falls down to the money, just like I said.
Curtis, if you will, let me see the draft of the letters first, maybe I'll go in. We'll polish them.
I'm moving on.
In the packet also is a, a letter of advertisement of the Baker's, the honor of town manager. The Deputy Curtis, maybe it's weird by turning it, you know? It's so, uh.
Did we, did we, what, what?
They have one.
Down here, did we go on? You got, you got a thing, did you go out there? Turned out to be yours.
I ain't doing that, no. I ain't seen you, you did that. Is he here?
No, it was, we talking about the survey that we had to give out last week. We gave it to him before he offered, he gave it to him before he offered, it was with that packet, and he had to write the numbers and mark with questions and all of that. But that's not what he's asking. He's, he's asking, uh, Mr. Barton, um, are we at a consensus that we're actually gonna have a town manager? That's what he's asking. Did we vote on that? That's what he's asking.
Well, that's what we're advertising for, yes.
Every, everybody. We have tabs or something that, we have tabs or something that we don't need. Uh, and then you just, you just said that money was tight, and it's a clerk and a city manager, basically, where they were used up here, basically, the same way. Might as well just have a clerk and save twenty or thirty dollars off. That's a golden, that thirty-eight, whatever we need to, you know what I'm saying? So what I'm saying is, if money is so tight, why are we trying to seek a city manager, for somebody that we don't even need? They don't do nothing for us. What, what happened to Sue? Sue was here for three years. She didn't bring not a half a job to Bronson. She didn't bring a half a house to Bronson. I mean, she did a lot of good stuff, but she didn't do nothing for the people of Bronson. I mean, where I see it, where I see it. I, I don't think, this is just my opinion, I, I only have one vote up here. Anybody that get up here, resident, Bruce, who ever get a leg, you know that you only have one vote. I only have one vote. And my vote is never to have a, a city manager, because it, it's just a waste of money. Just a waste of money. And we can't waste no money that we don't have.
So, the one thing that, that a city manager does do is they appropriate, um, grant funding. And that is one area that we would have an issue feeling if we did not have a city manager. Um, and that's the only issue that I really see that's huge, but we would still have to hire more people in the office. There's not enough people in our office. There's just not.
But they already, uh, you send out two more people, then you approve that for them to put out for.
For advertising for it?
Advertising, two, two more people in the office, other than, other than.
No.
City manager.
No, it, it, the only advertisement that you have in front of you is for the city manager and for the utility clerk, cause she just left. Her last name was Friday. So there's two people short.
Let me just say, I was in the office with her, and she did above and beyond her job. I don't think that we will replace Kelly. And when I say that, I mean, like, she had a proactive attitude. She did stuff when it came in instead of waiting till it was late. Um, I don't think that we are going to be able to replace her. We're gonna get something close to it, but in my personal opinion, she went above and beyond her job.
Yeah, but you never know what you're gonna get until you get it.
Right. Everybody has to be trained, all you can tell you.
But we have to create a culture where we're gonna keep people here. The people that get hired are gonna stay here, because when you go through these trains, it's very important to stay here. So we don't have to keep sending people out for trainings. We keep the people that are learning their position here. We treat them good. We treat them like they matter.
And we match salaries.
We have to do that. Chair?
Listen, I got a lot to say. Can I say something? I'm, I'm addressing stuff. Listen. The morale up there is piss poor in the affected community. People call up there. A prime example, the Deputy Curtis just got upset and walked out. There's, she may have seen that it's not, a, a lot of things going on in the office.
Amen.
She says, pay. I met with him this morning. I watched a lot, watched some things last week. I watched some things today. I met with him this morning. If we don't address some issues, the town, the county will take over the town of Bronson. There is some issues that's going on, that if it's not addressed soon, it's not gonna be a town. We can talk about a town manager, we can talk about all of it, the gym, but if we don't address the town business, soon, we're gonna be in trouble. Just on the basis of the things, I met with Sue a total of eight hours. Now, personally, I feel there is some things that she told me that should have been taken care of way before now. Okay? But it hasn't been. And now we left with everybody's leaving. I told Wendy when she got the job that she couldn't do that job herself. I sat in the office ten years and watched the Deputy Curtis. Okay? Now, there is some, there is some internal issues within the office. And I think it would be robust to address issues. I would like to meet with each one of you, one-on-one, and explain to you what's going on. Listen, if we don't do something, Wendy probably is not coming back.
Can we have, like, an unofficial luncheon with the employee?
Listen, let me, yeah. We don't, let me, this might, okay, if you got, I asked Sue for a job description. Because coming in, y'all asked me to come in to be a manager. If I don't know what everybody's doing, I can't address anybody. So she told me that she hadn't had opportunity to do job descriptions. She's working out of, she does it. Um, number of things that she does. And this is the thing, and the staff, I said, the morale is low because Sue is gone. Okay? There's things that they were doing for Sue that wasn't in their job description. Now Sue is gone. Guess what's gonna happen to those things that they done because I like you?
Yeah.
And the biggest issue that from the kids' sense of everything that I see is the, is the council, okay? It is, they don't appreciate us. Yeah. One thing we gotta do, we need to learn, if we want our job, you do your job. Okay? Personal feelings on how you feel about your boss, that shouldn't affect your job. But we have been babysitting.
I, I'm lost on how anybody feels that we are not supporting our employees.
And that's why I wanted to meet with you all, one-on-one, and there's some things I'm gonna let, I'm gonna open your ears to. Now, do I have a plan that might, that would try to work? I agree. We don't have the money in the budget for a, for a city and town manager. I don't think so. Because I know how we got there to get a town manager. We, we, we didn't have that money, I don't think. But the city council at that time,
Yeah, they chose.
There's, there's so many things that, you know, but I don't wanna, that's why I'm gonna meet with you all, one-on-one. And let's, let's go, let's do it that way.
So, me personally, I'm available anytime you tell me. I was already looking at, um, the thirteenth, when they're gonna be out of the office. I will let this guy know in the morning that I will not be there, um, cause they're gonna be at a training. So I will be there on the thirteenth, um, but instead of us looking for the qualifications that are already there, me personally, I think that we should promote the person who already has the biggest quality, and that is that they're here and they're not leaving. That they've chosen to be in Bronson, in this job, and they chose not to go anywhere else. So in my personal opinion, I think with training, we should promote you to the city manager.
Well, I don't respond to that, okay?
But yes, we, we, we can still all meet.
Yeah, I, I can. Th- this is the thing. I love the town of Bronson, and I'll do whatever I can to help the town of Bronson. I, I look at it from a standpoint, if you wanna do something, you know, the council decides to do something, make me operation manager, and I still keep, that way you can bring up some money. Hire, hire a, not a town clerk, but an office manager. And then make Wendy assistant manager. With the money that we were paying Sue, with the money that the guys came in, you had to go ninety thousand dollars.
I do wanna say, while you're looking for that, the attitudes of, I'm gonna say what I wanna say, are you gonna fire me? That has to end. That has to end right now. Um, because we, we are asking you to be here because you love what you do. Like, we're asking you to come in with a positive attitude, and you have a positive attitude a lot. But when you get to the point where you're saying, okay, if such and such happens, I'm out of here. We can't really have that, because you gotta be better than that. We gotta be better than that. I don't respect a person that has sat in these seats and quit. The reason why I don't respect that is because you gotta be able to set your feelings aside before you step in this chair. And if you cannot do that, then don't sign up to do it. Because the town shouldn't have to pay for another election for somebody getting in a hissy fit and quitting, you know what I mean? So, we cannot have that, those conversations. It's just, it's not gonna help. There, there's nothing that's gonna help. If you're feeling with somebody, nothing is gonna help by saying, oh, well, if this happens, I'm leaving.
Bruce? I think the thing that's gonna help right now is, uh, for each, in every one of these council people, go sit down with staff. And literally, to have these conversations, cause this has been happening. And these people are this upset about things going on, and you don't know about it, it's because you ain't been, and you ain't been engaging. So, and I don't wanna point fingers, but obviously, we ain't been engaging, and we don't have any idea of how these people feeling right now. So, before you make any, uh, position feel, feel any positions or anything else, what you need to do is figure out what's going on with your staff, and try to get your staff, and, and, and understand your staff, but that's what I didn't know. I sat up there in those seats before, all right? And you nothing without the people that are out there every single day dealing with the things of this town. You nothing. Only thing you are, is a sounding board out there in the community for problems. And you bring those problems back, and you got people in this office and people on that street that fix those problems. So what needs to happen is, and I ain't trying to lecture nobody, but you gotta get in touch with what's going on with your employees, cause that, right, that shouldn't happen. All right? She supposed to be taking the minutes in this meeting. That should not have happened. So obviously, there's some underlying things right now for her to get up that easy and walk out. This ain't just want something to happen tonight and make her do that. Hold on.
Let me, let me say this.
Hold on.
I, I just wanna say one little thing, is that the town of Bronson runs out of grants. So whoever, whatever you decide, somebody has to be able to do grants. Because we get a lot of grants. We don't have a revenue stream to sustain the town of Bronson. It's grants. So just, just remember that.
That is a lot.
It's.
Yeah, but your bill, you see, it has some, you see, that too.
All right, Elijah?
What I was about to say, uh, go back to, oh, nearly five, seven years ago. I asked you, uh, cause I'm always were concerned about office, what's next. And I asked you, uh, what way you thought was wrong. And, uh, I told you that I think you should go and see what happened, see what those girls are doing. And your response was, and you did go and do it. And I told you that I think they need, I know they need a lady for what they was doing. Now, Wendy, I hate to talk, while I'm talking, when she's not here. I, I, I grew up here, I probably grew up in one of you. Uh, I go to the, to the, her desk and write a wagon circle in the T P with paper and books all around. I brought it up, brought that up up here, and now the floor is clean, but, but that is not, that is true. And what I'm saying, with you growing up there, you may believe not, I mean, they do need a lady. And I feel they still need a lady, but it need to be more organized, and they need some help in there. They really do.
Great.
Uh, I'm a business owner, have been, my whole life, I was raised in that store, and, um, and this is no offense to Sue at all, but that office has never been organized in a way that she cross-trained everybody, and everybody knew the right answer. You would go in and, and I would ask a question, and three different people would give me four different answers. Because nobody was on the same page in there. And although she was sweet, a nice lady, that doesn't mean that she was good at managing the office and the people. And from my own experience, when there is disorganization, and people don't know the answers to things, then there are also money problems, which we. and people don't know the answers to things, then there are also money problems, which we have also heard about tonight. So, we, okay, so, the thing is, is that whoever is the manager of, considered the town manager or the office manager, whoever, should be, and Elijah said it last meeting, cross-training every single person. At my businesses, my motto in my businesses is, everybody's job is everybody's job. If you aren't there and it needs to be done, then you need to be able to do it. Every single person. The clerk should have known how to build water. It shouldn't have just been Kelly. And our part-time lady up here, Vicki, should not have mountains of work thrown on her when she is at the office.
Well, we are, we are all cross-trained, Rachel, we are. But this new system is so intense. I mean, we have books to have to go through to make sure every single thing, all the Ts are crossed and As are dotted, and you, you can't make a mistake. So, it's, it's scary to me when you have a book to look at, do I hit okay? You know, just to make sure, 'cause you can't go back and correct something without making a phone call to somebody. So, you have to know exactly, and you're scared, 'cause you don't wanna make a mistake. That's the biggest thing. We are all cross-trained. Wendy knows how to do everything in the office. But her work, her workload is overloaded. I mean, you were in there, we seen it. Everybody has, and now today, two people in the office. And so, Curtis had one of his employees, a person come in to us. It, it's just overwhelming, too much, and then you're the first of the month.
I think sometimes you can simplify things, though.
It's very hard. I'll be honest, a business owner too, too successful businesses. But you have to have your staff in order to make sure that somebody is always at a, you know, at a certain place at a certain time.
It's easier talking back when y'all aren't in there.
Yeah, you're not in the office, and you don't see the work.
We don't have enough staff because...
You made an assumption, so...
But, yeah. This is, um, I was doing research on the gym, I also was doing research, um, on towns that were close to us in numbers, and the majority of them had seven to nine people working in the office.
Number two.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, there's not enough people, and there were some places that even called to confirm. Hey, how many people do you have in the office? Seven to nine. So, they, they really don't have enough people to do it. And then cross-training is good, but there's some things that you have to be certified in the office to do. So, you're not, like, they're gonna be gone for training on the thirteenth.
I'm, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say the opposite.
Okay, well, it says in here that both the other, I'm going to take off to help out in there. But, like, they can't do elections until they get trained. And then when we hire somebody else, if they're not trained in elections, guess what they can't help with? I mean, it's really, it's easier said than done in that situation. Because if they're not, if they're not on the bank, they can't do anything with payments or funding or anything like that. It's, they need more staff for that.
And you have to be, as an, as an employee, I'm an employee, I mean, and I can make the statement. You have to have an incentive to work, to, to work towards, okay, if I wanna come in on Thursday, I make fifteen dollars an hour for the job that I do. And my description is a mile long. And I do more work from a part-time position than, than a full-time person does. Two or three people is what I do in the three days that I work. And so, now I'm gonna be asked to work Thursday and Friday, I have no benefits, but I make fifteen dollars an hour. So, like, today, I've got thirteen hours in today. Fifteen dollars an hour. Okay.
It's all about the money. It's all about the money.
I got a question. On this, um, job description, like, utility clerk, we have to run that for like a month before you can hire anybody, right? So, my proposal is that we table the town manager thing until we have the discussion, figure out what we're gonna do with that. And we at least advertise this utility clerk, 'cause we know we have to have that position. And so, the longer we wait to put that out there, I mean, we can't even look for anybody until we advertise it, that's...
Well, this, this is what I already impol, Celeste understands the outside. So, with her being in the office right now, she's learned, she's learning the program. Um, we've had probably four utility clerks. And I've already inside, because I think she's not, I don't think she's gonna leave. I think she'll learn the system, and she'll be an asset in the system. And, you know, so that's why I was looking at, at a structure. You know, I talked with them this morning about, you know, restructuring and everything, to get more people in the office and get people in positions that's gonna be there. As a small town, you can't have such a turnover rate that when somebody learns the system in two or three years, they gone. We need, like, her making fifteen dollars an hour. I, I didn't know how much she was making an hour. And the workload that she's doing. Wendy, I've been told her, you know, what she does and her pain. But see, this is the thing. If I'm your supervisor, I'm gonna talk with you just like I do my guys. Like, when I took over, I didn't ask for a raise for me, I asked for a raise for my guys. 'Cause a leader's gonna be as good as the people that they lead. And if you don't engage your people and make sure your people take, there's no way that she's been there this long and fifteen dollars an hour.
Shame.
I know when we did the budget, there was a percentage increase in there for all of them. So, are they not getting raises, or is that... 'Cause I know when we, when we did the budget, there was a three to five percent supposed to have been hiding or set aside for...
See, I, I don't, I don't know, you know what I'm saying, I don't know the, the numbers.
I have to...
How did y'all look at this?
Who could remember a value that you... Does everyone remember a job description?
No. What I'm saying? Okay, 'cause when I asked, our job description... See, and I'm gonna tell you, what's in the, what's on policy, in policy? For somebody coming in, you understand what you're doing before you add more to what you're doing? If you're not fulfilling your job description that you have, what's the purpose of adding more to it? Now, when you look at, when you look at the policy for job description, it say C appendix A. Well, there is no appendix A in the policy.
Well, I do wanna say for a couple of things. One thing is, is that I don't want this to turn into the fire department, like, how it was before, um, we let Dennis go. Because this is exactly what happened in the fire department. We didn't know about a lot of things that were going on in the fire department until it got to the point where they couldn't work together. Number one. Number two, I do wanna say, and Wendy's not here, please remind her what I'm fixing to say. Is that, um, other towns have been in this situation, and they have forgotten to send in their quarterly IRS payments, and that needs to be made sure that that's done. So, just please tell her, I'll text her. But that's just something that, once you're late, you owe late payments and all that, and...
Interesting.
And see, and these are the, these are the things, like I'm saying, that it may not be on anybody's job description, but they've been doing it because I like you. And now because what you like gone. So, and there's no job description, guess what's gonna happen? Those things are not, and that's why I was trying to plug in and find out who do what. You know, I knew that, but I haven't seen any job descriptions. So, but everybody is just doing a numbers of things. And so, there's no accountability. There's no structure, like I told them this morning, there's no structure.
And Kelly did stuff in a way where you can already tell that she felt like if she didn't do it, it wasn't gonna get done. So, or it wasn't gonna get done the right way. So, there's a lot of stuff that she was doing that was not her job.
It's, it's a lot, it's a lot of different things. But see, this is, see, y'all can look at this.
Do you have a job description?
It, it just so.
Okay.
So, can we table this to the next meeting, and by then, or that everybody will have met with you and have a conversation one way or another? So, and that, so, so our next meeting is on the seventeenth, so by the seventeenth, each one of us will have met with you. Figure out.
Okay. Any other discussion on this?
Other than I, I propose that we table this to the next meeting.
In the packet, it's the utility clerk's permit slash permit technician job description for this, for who I would say...
Do we wanna wait, or do you...
One of which I do, because I have...
Yeah, let's, let's wait.
Okay. Moving right along, the Lee County Board of Representatives.
I can make a motion to table it. I make a motion that we table the, um, posting of the utility clerk and the, um, town manager job for the discussion. With Wendy, with both of them.
Yeah, Wendy, Wendy. If they have to be posted for thirty days, should we post it and then...
I said that already, but if we look at what, what's here, we need to kinda have a discussion.
I think the utility clerk is already posted.
Oh, it's already posted, okay.
Utility clerk, but not the town manager.
Okay, well, never mind.
Okay, is that a form of a motion or not?
So, I need to table it to the discussion for town manager. Yes, we're gonna table it. And so, after we've all met with Congress, and then it's...
This is Ronny, got a motion. Motion in a second.
Good.
Yeah.
Lee County Board of Town Commission requesting, and we talked about it earlier, they wanna close off Mungo Street, and whether from the intersection of School Street to the intersection of Garner Street, they wanna close that, and then they wanna close Garner Street all the way to Calhoun Street. So, it's that little block.
They gonna close all of Mungo Street?
Not all of them, from School Street to Garner Street. But what is out, yeah, they're gonna close, they're gonna close that street and close Garner going to Calhoun Street. Um, they're gonna shut it down at two-thirty to about nine.
Curtis Stone, yes, gonna give you the gym.
About nine, nine? So, this been a plan?
I'm just curious, it's like, why, why this like, this is the tenth, that's next week. So, why is this the first that we're gonna, that would be my...
What kind of celebration, like?
We don't know.
To ask for, to celebrate the hundredth year anniversary of the Lee County. On March thirteenth, Wendy will be attending the election training. I think people... Just Wendy. One of them have to be in the office to receive the ballot when people are coming in. No one else can receive other than Wendy and Vicki. Brussels Sports.
Is there gonna be another day for Vicki to go train?
I don't have to, only one person has to come in to train for that. And we're gonna have a separate...
Brussels Sports. They put in a request to use the fields, um, at James Colwell Park. They have all the, they think they turn, uh, they turn, yeah, things in the packet. The insurance, the liability insurance certificates. Uh, I think they have it in there, what they made, the town. And insured too.
Yeah, with the town insured. Um, so, I would also like to listen to you, to be honest.
So, my husband Ryan has been able to build a working relationship with a big youth soccer director down in Arvintina. We were hoping to send our whole team down there, unfortunately, because of the time that it would take for everybody to get prepared for the trip. We were only able to take our son. Um, and because of that, his team won second place in the Silver Cup run. Um, it was a team made up of kids from all over the countries and all of that, so it was really fun to see. But because of that, because of our trip down there, um, he's been able to get into talks with the director there and many of the soccer people in that area to where he would like to be able to send more of the older teams, um, seventeen to twelve year uh, building up the tournaments, to be able to send the kids down there where they can be showcase to a lot of the professional scouts and teams down there and just worldwide stage for them. So, that's something that Brussels New Sports Soccer is doing for the community and the kids in this community, and something that we're striving to do continuously with everything, so.
Any, any questions?
About what she just said?
No, about...
Um, you don't have schedules?
Not for the games yet, but so, there should have been a...
Right, right, there's a practice schedule here, but we just wanna, like, on the Saturdays, on the days, the days that you're gonna host.
We did, we were creating that, we, until I get permission to use or give for practice, we didn't schedule any of them. You guys gave us permission for the practices, and you say that it's okay to post some games, we will have a home game scheduled.
I thought you were already practicing.
They were starting this week.
As long as they are insured.
Um, so, are there specific days in the week from March to August?
I think there's something almost every day excepting Friday and Saturday. And then if we do some home games, we'll have something on Saturday. So, I think Sunday, we have a soccer and T-ball at practice. Monday, there's some baseball and soccer. Tuesday is softball and soccer. Wednesday is T-ball and soccer.
And so, every day that you're out there, are all the fields being used? No?
The soccer field's made.
There's nobody else on the soccer fields except for us today, so...
So, this week, when the softball starts for later roll, you'll have T-ball and softball? So, I would, I believe I have some field where you'll be taking part.
Yeah, there, there's high fields out there, we'll be using the practice.
So, other than, I guess, permission to, um, use the fields for practice, what else do you need?
So, based on softball, I don't think we need lights. Um, T-ball could ask about maybe utilizing lights if, um, their practices are gonna be later. I feel like the time changes a little this weekend, and we'll need lights. Um, soccer, I believe, wanted access to the bathrooms as well as the lights.
Lights in the bathrooms, just because we, our practices, we would like to go till eight P M. Because a lot of kids can't get out there until later. So, it would have to run into the evening time, which is what we normally did, uh, in the past seasons. And so, just being able to use it until the time of when the lights aren't necessary, but...
So, I think when the, oh, so like just for next week, 'cause the time changes on Sundays, so it's not gonna be dark at...
The sun will set at like seven-thirty, and we'd have to get all the kids off the fields before then. So, that would only leave them forty-five minutes of actual practice. Whereas there, you know, the kids wanna be out there, that's the reason we're out there so much. So, it's, we wanna give them the ability to practice as much as possible.
How did you access the lights before?
We had the keys that I turned into Curtis'.
So, if we could just get the lights until the sun sets after eight and be able to use the bathrooms, because even today, having the younger kids walk across the parking lot, across the street to go use the other bathrooms, it, it was unnecessary, like, it was unnecessarily harder for them.
Kids, uh, we just changed all the locks. Okay. I think the biggest issue is the field. I talked with, um, Durden today. Who will be telling the field, real telling the issue, that the people of the field, it would have to be on you. The real, real model, I'll give the stuff.
Yeah, yeah, as long as you guys take care of the grounds, we'll be in good shape.
Before it's keys, I would designate one person, um, to have keys that, um, I talked with Durden today about. You know, maybe get keys on till fields, um, and control the lights. Because what we don't want to do is, so we just issue keys, we just, we just spend, for, uh, change out all the locks. And to have the same thing where everybody has a key, you know, give initial keys for everybody. I don't think we wanna.
So, what they did, which, whenever like you were going to sign up to use the gym, so you would have to go to that office up there and you had to sign out, like, like we have a schedule. And then they gave you one key and then you had to bring it back, like, like say, I practiced in there that whole week. At the end of the week, I had to bring that key back. And then when I needed again, I had to come back and get it. But I had to go in and sign out and take responsibility for that key and bring it back. So I think we have one, that one person comes in and signs out the key and is responsible for it. And that's it. It isn't a passing around of the key. Whoever signs it out is responsible for it. And that's it. That's with anybody that uses it, period. So that one, we have to have the key back, right?
And so, Mr. Durden, is he doing this for free or are we paying him to do it?
He, he, I talked to him today.
Well, I just have to clarify that.
I was more of a deal that like, like I done last year was like take care of the T-ball field. And like, if I was out there today, couldn't get in, I would've drawn over fields because they all need it. Um, I don't really think I need any responsibility over the lights of soccer and stuff like that, you know, I don't think that's gonna be me.
So I think soccer is the only group requesting you use the lights for whatever business.
I was just, we were talking about maybe doing it because we can only get there, like our practice was sort of six. So we would wanna use a field that had lights, but it's only gonna be for a week, you know, we'll deal with that. After that, there won't be any lights.
The time changes on Sunday, so.
Basically to practice this month, right?
Yeah, but I mean, we can, we can manage a week. Uh, it was more of a deal, like, I got locked out of the field a couple times last year and to where I would go up there and try to take care of it and I couldn't get in. And now, I went up there this year, they're all locked and that's, that's fine by me. There's too much damage being done up there anyways, so. That's the, the right thing to do is lock those fields, but at the same time, it'd be nice to get it taken care of. Figure out who's gonna take care of and who could get into it.
So make, I guess we need to, you would need to figure out who's gonna be responsible for it and then come to the town hall and get what you need to get. So whenever you do have a schedule and you have dates, make sure we know so that we know what's going on out there Saturday, everybody. I mean, you know, so that we can figure out. As long as nobody else is scheduled to use the field, that's why I'm saying, that's why we, we need a schedule because somebody else might turn in the same paper for Saturday. You don't wanna go out there and somebody's having something else. So if you turn in the schedule and it checks out, then we can look at the dates and be like, oh, well, you can't use it on the fifteenth because they're having a balloon giveaway out there or something, whatever. So, just for that purposes, so that we have a schedule, so it doesn't conflict with anything else.
Is there a field associated with this?
I don't think that we're gonna be charged for any of this.
So you're gonna try to be old school?
It's not soccer this season, but we may have a couple of baseball and T-ball games.
I mean, if we doing it for the kids, you know, um, we try to help out as much as possible.
We just need to know who.
I just need to know, you know, for its key control.
There, there is a, just to give you a heads up, there is like a sunrise service on the twentieth.
That's Sunday?
Yeah. But there may be people that come there Saturday night and try to set up or whatever, um, but you know.
Well, that would also be the communication back and forth. So when we go back to say, I put you on a schedule, then they can look at the calendar and tell you, well, these days you're not gonna be able to use it.
If we host games there, will we get a concession section?
I mean, I don't want our inmates getting that water or anything, so.
You're not gonna be stocking anything in there, right?
It would just be if we had a game that day, just to.
So it's just like at the school, you take, you put it in and you pull it out. As long as you don't leave your stuff in there, because if you leave your stuff in there, it's kind of at risk.
Yeah, what about the rules and stuff, the other, you trying to use those or just the concessions thing? It's up to the council.
As long as they don't leave their stuff in there, so we're responsible for it.
Yeah, I don't wanna, and if they clean up after themselves.
And, okay, before it's cleaned up, do you have access to the restroom? Are you gonna clean the restrooms up or?
So that, so we can do similar to what we did at the gym, where, you know, why you clean the gym, where yes, you pick up all the trash and be all the trash, make sure all the toilets are flushed.
I think for anybody, we should have a checklist. That's what they would have anywhere. And so, before you leave, you would have to check off, this is, this is what has to be done. I mean, I think that should be for anything, anybody that uses it, they should know that they're responsible for X, Y, and Z. Even with a deposit, you have to be responsible.
What about the practices? You know, they wanna get into the soccer restrooms, you know, it's gonna be until somebody open them, or you can show the clothes.
So it's, uh, obviously it's a key, can we put those keys together? If they're gonna use, if they're gonna use the lights, and you have to give a key for that already, can we put the bathroom key with it, so then they're.
I have keys, you know, that, I have, you know, they made keys that we can, we can actually issue. A key to everything that they need access to.
Okay, so then that, put that on the checklist, so there, that's part of it, has to be locked and it has to be cleaned before they even. And that's with any, that's with any facility that you use that doesn't belong to you anywhere that you have to. So you might have to go there and think about it first, because you might, don't wanna forget nothing, wanna make sure everything.
Which one I recommend the concessions, and it's the bathrooms for soccer and more of the.
Good luck.
For them to be able to use the field? Okay, I'm making a motion that we allow Bronson Youth Sports to use the, uh, fields for practices. Let's just go, well, just, just to use the subject.
Subject to a checklist prepared perhaps by Curtis of things that have to be, leave it to him, and this is a judgment.
Okay, so I make a motion that Bronson Youth Sports, you know, have to use the field, um, with, uh, a checklist and a key from Curtis for the lights.
All right, we're motion in a second. So let Bronson Youth use the field. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Who's the name?
West name is Payoff Vacation Leave for Kelly Williams. She had thirty-one point five dollars, but she ain't paid.
I made the motion that we pay Kelly for her vacation hours.
We're gonna motion in a second, pay Kelly for her vacation hours. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Right, on the public works, we have a sewer line leak at the Kangaroo, um, on the side where the groundwater pump station is. Big trucks come in and they turn off twenty-four and they park sideways, so we have a line that was damaged. Uh, we had to repair, uh, you're gonna see them to pay bills, cost of twenty-five hundred dollars to have it repaired, so.
Do we pass that on to them? No, to the stones.
No, it's not.
And it's not the kangaroo doing it, it's the trucks hitting that corner.
You gonna say you can't move all the way out, you do that?
Is there something that we could put there and make?
I wouldn't be watching. Next thing about this DOP, we had an inspection at the sewer plant. I'm looking at the full report back from Todd on that, but everything went well, the. We had a pump out, um, a week before and getting ready for the inspection. There's a couple of things, the dumpster that, uh, on the bar string, they had changed it out and put a dumpster that had holes in it. So they gave us on that, I've already called to have that replaced, um, with that. And that's pretty much it.
Did the roof at the water tower get replaced?
Not yet. Uh, I talked with, um, Kelly, who's supposed to start soon.
Oh, they ain't done on that?
We listen, Vicki, you're little Jeff.
Yes, I got a call.
I guess you got a call.
Yeah, a call.
You got anything, Curtis?
That's it.
Well, uh, Jeff got a call, so, uh, Mr. Warren, you got anything?
I got it, yeah, no, sir.
All right. Uh, we don't have any, Curtis, Curtis reported on our water and sewer situation for infrastructure. Carrie, you got anything?
We have a, we have more, um, requests of all this, Elijah Williams, subject change.
I guess give up for this. Guess give up. All right. It is kind of a thing, and it's gonna be a thing. Now, what happened, I met, uh, Miss Rachel was saying about the letter that the mayor lost.
I didn't load it.
Now, what I'm gonna say is that you called me on Friday and you told me that that man right there was your general manager.
That's right, he is.
And GM, right, general manager. Okay, but that's not what you're saying on him.
He is the interim town manager, you're right.
I know that, but that's what you told me. See, now I believe you, he is alive.
I told you, oh, hold on, you, you start to cross up things here now. Yes, sir. I told you that, I asked you what you thought. I do this with everybody. I have called several different people in the community and I asked them, I said, what would you think about Curtis being our town manager? How do you feel about that? I asked the public about that. I represent everybody here, okay? So, I called you because you are very active in this. Now, if you don't want me to call you, and I don't wanna call you down about this, but if you don't want me to call you anymore, I won't. And I won't inform you with this stuff. I talked to Mark about this. I talked to several different people about this. And that's all I do. I just talk to them. I talked to Libby. She's not here, she had to leave. Uh, I talked to, uh, I talked to Curtis about it personally. That's all, that's all I'm doing, just asking information. How do you feel about that? Now, I can't talk to these people because the sunshine law is not allowed. So I have to talk to you.
But, what I'm saying is, that was wrong. I mean, what you're saying you did, that's my problem with that, but that's not what you told me.
Well, what?
You told me he was following that.
He, he is our interim town manager right now.
Yeah, I know that, I don't tell him too much.
Now, what are you getting this from, Elijah?
I'm getting it from what you told me, see.
No, sir, no, no, you're trying to throw me up the bus here on something right here, but you don't know what you're talking about. Well, I tell you what, I beg to differ with what you're saying, okay? And I'm not gonna sit here and call you a liar because that's my purpose of my being here, but you are misunderstanding, is what I'm saying, and you're misquoting what I said. I did not call him the general manager. I said Curtis is our interim town manager right now, and that is his title. And he will continue to be that until we change it. But I don't do that. These people on this board right here with me do that.
I guess whenever I talk to you, I need to put my call.
Absolutely, go ahead, I welcome that. Because you need a check. You need to check yourself. Let's just see here, this is one of them.
I'm gonna say this, and I'm, I'm gonna say this, you're living not leaving my town right.
Well, I beg to differ with that.
I'm gonna do like what happened to, uh, Counting the Shoe. He used to have them a few times for Mr. Carter. I need your resignation.
No, sir. You won't get it, but I tell you what, you will. And I, I give you this opportunity. If you want to, you can run to your office and then you can try your luck.
Well, already somebody won't do that.
Thank you for having me.
He brought that up, I appreciate it. I'm endorsing, wait two weeks, I'm endorsing. Uh, my friend here, uh, Reggie, and, uh, I'm endorsing Mr. Green.
Thank you.
That's a long, that's a long way to go.
You're three minutes early with.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
All right. Carrie, what is? Who's got anything else to say?
No.
All right. Carrie, you got anything?
No.
Tyler's not here, Mr. Virginia?
Oh, yes, I can ask. Why you do me like that? I can do good. Okay, um, Mr. Mike Stacks was in the office this week. And one thing he had said, um, to the people in the office was a change that he wanted to make in regards to inspections. And it will make it a lot faster for him to find inspections if, um, there is an email address, um, dedicated to only inspections at townofBronson.org. Um, so, and I cannot ask Ms. Wendy, but I'm pretty sure she has already started working on it. Um, if not, I can, um, Ms. Vicki, or I can call Nick and get that ball rolling if you guys approve of that. Um, but he said that it will cut down on the time of anybody finding those inspections. And he does not want anything else sent to that except for inspections. But, um, I think when we receive input from people like that or telling us how we can save time, especially on a position that's only open on Wednesdays, I think that we should implement it immediately. Um.
So that's just an internal thing, that's all you, you just do it. All right.
Oh, yeah, that's about me. Okay, that's it.
All right. All right. All right, so is anybody else a public key saver? Got the incentive, I'm gonna pay the bills. We'll table them to the next meeting. Any other motion on that?
Oh, I said, oh, I make a motion that we, um, table the bills until the next meeting. One second.
We have a motion with a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Who's the name, who's Carrie?